All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone. June eleventh, twenty twenty four, Town of Waxall Board of Commissioners meeting. Congratulations for making it. Thank you very much. We will start with our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise in a manner you see fit. Okay, so it looks like we have a minor amendment to the agenda tonight. Jeff?
Mayor, I'm requesting that we remove item F two, recognition of public services from this meeting, and they'll come back in another meeting where they all can attend.
Understood. F two is now removed. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
All in favor? General public comments? Nobody has signed up for general public comments? Sorry. Next up, adoption of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is so adopted. First order of business, we have recognitions. It appears as though they have entered the room. Police Chief Wilson, I think you have a recognition for us.
So tonight, the Waxall Police Department would like to recognize Jeremy Ferguson. Jeremy started his career at the Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Office, where he spent six years. He came here in two thousand and sixteen, so he's been here for eight years come August. So Jeremy not only has attained his advanced law enforcement certificate, which means he's received over one thousand hours of continuing education in law enforcement, but he's also achieved Master Patrol Officer Three by getting this. He's got a total of fourteen years, thirteen years. So this will be his fourteenth year, and we are excited that he has received his advanced presentation with this.
Well, let me express for the people of Waxall my thanks and appreciation for our law enforcement, for all the work they do and their serious dedication and commitment to their job. The fact that you guys continue to do the continued education and you advance through these higher levels, it says a lot about the quality of our department. So thank you very much. Alrighty, next up, we have a Mr. James Kelly.
Well, good evening. I am James Kelly. I'm the town's traffic and transportation project engineer. To start off, before we dive into the actual presentation, I am going to jump right into the survey, give you a brief walkthrough of what this is, why it's important, and what you can expect as you walk through your survey. And you might be asking yourselves, well, didn't we just do a survey on the MTP? Yes, we did. That was the Waxall Master Transportation Plan. This MTP is different. This is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and it's a regional plan. So the CRTPO stands for the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and they're updating their twenty fifty five MTP. This long-range plan will shape transportation goals, objectives, and project priorities through the year twenty fifty five, impacting not only Union County, but parts also Iredell and Mecklenburg County as well. And just to know, just to note that this survey was live since June third, and it closes on July third of this year. So you have just a few more weeks to fill out this survey. The community's insights are crucial to creating this regional transportation plan that will ultimately help to serve not only Waxall's needs, but the regional needs as well. So jumping right into how can you get to this survey, all you have to do is go into any internet browser and type in twenty fifty five mtp.org, and that takes you to this website, which gives you an overview of CRTPO, the twenty fifty five process, and walks you through. And as you scroll down, there's a link to the online survey and interactive map feature. So the online survey walks through various goals that the CRTPO has implemented, and I encourage you, and I encourage you to take that survey. I'm going to jump right into the interactive piece by clicking this tab here, and this is an interactive map, and it gives you some feedback on what to do. So essentially, you're going to drop pins, various pins, either other corridor, a point, or an intersection or an area, and you can see that people have already started to utilize this survey. And as I scroll in and zoom into Waxall and navigating throughout this survey, you can go to various intersections throughout, really throughout the entire Union County, Iredell, Mecklenburg County, to add a pin. So I'm just going to show you how to do that. So right there, I just clicked Add a Pin, and you can zoom into any particular intersection that you want, or corridor or stretch, and you simply just click that pin. You can select the various category. Let's say, for example, this is a corridor, and you can type the name of the roadway out there. You can specify what types of modes need improvement, whether it's walking improvements, mobility improvements, biking, micro mobility, as well as driving roadway and transit. So there's various options there, free as well. And then you simply just click whatever, let's say there's a freeway issue here, and then you can write in what type of improvement is needed. Maybe there's an overpass that's needed at that particular location, and then hit, and then simply hit the submit button, and that will do that. That will show the actual input there. Now, I just canceled out of that. Another feature that you can use is you can see that people have already started to implement various comments here. So, for example, you can upvote various comments if you like that. Here's one on, looks like the Waxall Parkway bypass extension. And if you like those comments, you can also upvote various comments if you don't want to write one out yourself. So that's, that's the gist. There's a legend down below. That's how to navigate to it. And it's important that you complete this survey before the cutoff July third. So diving right into the presentation to give you some more feed, more feedback, as well as to talk about who CRTPO is, what this process is, what they're asking for, and more of the specifics. So like I said before, CRTPO is the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and they are the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the MPO for this particular region. So they have a cross-jurisdictional planning organization, and they work within three primary counties, those being Union, Mecklenburg, and Iredell at this current point in time. CRTPO coordinates with its twenty-four member jurisdictions, which includes Waxall, and CDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and the general public to fund transportation studies, projects, and plans throughout the entire region. CRTPO's mission is to provide leadership and collaboration with its member jurisdictions and communities in developing the region's transportation system. And their vision is to establish a connected and equitable transportation system that provides mobility choices for the region. So what is the MTP in this particular case? It stands for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and why is it important? Well, that figure over there to the right shows the stair-step approach to as far as how transportation projects are progressed. So we've done a lot of talking on the CTP, which is your fifty-year vision per se, and really, the CTP is your wish list. This is not the CTP. So this is the MTP, and the key difference is that the MTP is fiscally constrained, and it's more of your representative of your twenty-year timeline as far as transportation improvements. In order to get projects funded on the TIP, or the State Transportation Improvement Program, projects must be on the MTP. So the MTP is a critical step in moving those projects toward construction. In addition, the MTP helps establish a vision for transportation across the region, identifies needs and deficiencies in the network, recommends specific projects and strategies, creates an action plan for implementation, and helps shape policy and program decisions. So what is the overall purpose of the MTP? Again, the MTP is fiscally constrained and is updated every four years in accordance with state law. In addition to that, the MTP considers all various modes of transportation, and is required to access federal funds for transportation projects. So for example, one particular project that the town just concluded a few months back was the downtown pedestrian improvements project, the TAP project. So that project ultimately was funded on the STIP, and we were able to get federally-funded dollars to improve our transportation network downtown. So the MTP is a critical step. Like I said, it's, your voice really does matter as far as that survey. I encourage everyone throughout the town to take the survey, because that is recorded regional input. And finally, the MTP establishes policy for transportation improvements. Not going to dive too much into detail as far as the planned development schedule. There it is, though. You can always take a look at it again. As far as how these things, as far as the goals of the MTP, how are they established? Well, really, there's two different types of committees as a part of the MTP update. They're known as the Steering Committee and the Advisory Committee. So Waxall actually serves on the Advisory Committee for CRTPO in helping to establish those goals and objectives. There are two key updates to the twenty fifty five MTP that was not included in past years. That includes the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the IIJA. And this is really a federal program with various notable themes that include carbon reduction, resiliency, especially when it comes to stormwater, equity, transportation technology, safety, and housing. One other key component of the twenty fifty five MTP is that this also includes a Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration certification review, and focuses in on environmental mitigations to address this resiliency in stormwater, as well as congestion management. In particular projects, like, for example, the intersection of sixteen and seventy-five, as we all know, throughout downtown has some serious congestion management concerns going on there that would be, that would be useful to address. So, and then finally, one other thing added into the twenty fifty five is a focus on tourism and tourism planning, especially when it comes to local travel and tourism agencies to help better address various needs throughout Iredell, Mecklenburg, and Union County. One key difference again from the twenty fifty five and twenty fifty MTP, especially when it comes to community engagement, the twenty fifty MTP was taken during COVID nineteen. So all of that engagement was done virtually, and that's not necessarily the best way, if it's just to focus on virtual and not also in person, not necessarily the best way to fully engage the community. So the twenty fifty five MTP focuses still on digital engagement tools, like you've seen before, that interactive mapping, as well as incorporates various pop-up events and targeted engagements, equity-focused groups, stakeholder interviews throughout the region. The goal is to ultimately connect with various communities and communities that CRTPO hasn't heard much from in the past, especially the rural communities. So again, there's that interactive mapping feature, and I definitely encourage you all to take that survey. That link was the twenty fifty five mtp.org, and that website really serves as the project's hub. So any input that you put into that survey is reported and is documented as part of the regional process. So it's very critical as far as transportation projects that you submit that, because that is the regional method of input. Again, there's opportunities to engage digitally. There's updates on ongoing activities and project processes, and this is really the repository for resources and deliverables. And we'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much, James, and I'll definitely encourage folks to take those surveys and look into those. And it's a time to have your voice heard, and this is at a regional level. So we did do a lot of work locally, and now it's time to do the same amount of work regionally. So especially those that commute and tend to get out and about on a regular basis, it's a great time to get your voice heard. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have some public hearings tonight. So I'll first start by getting a motion to open an official public hearing. Can I get a motion to open these public hearings?
Motion to open public hearings?
All in favor?
Aye.
These public hearings are now open. We have two topics of discussion. First is a rezoning petition. Blair Israel, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. This is a request for rezoning by Matthew Kalanowski, who's here tonight with his family. It's for the- It's for a property located at 1020 Old Providence Road. It is currently zoned R3 residential, and the request is to zone it to, rezone it to NC Neighborhood Center. The property is just a little bit over two acres in, in area and, let's see, I got my slides behind here. You can see in this slide here, in this picture here, Google Street View, you can see the property dead ahead and the road going straight up from us is, is South Providence. And then you've got Arbor Drive on the left side. So directly to our right, if you were standing in that location, is Kensington Elementary. And just past that is the museum prop, I'm sorry, not Kensington, Waxall Elementary. I take my son to Kensington. And so Waxall's, the Waxall Museum is just up to the right. If you continue up the road, you'll be headed to downtown Waxall, and we'll see that in map view in just a moment. And then off to your left, you can see the cemetery. So let's take a look at the map view. Here's 1020 Old Providence Road depicted with the star on the left side, where you can see all the different parcels and buildings. And on the right side, it's outlined on that aerial view. You can see its proximity to downtown there, the mill, Waxall Elementary, the Waxall Museum, and South Side Cemetery. You can see it on the map view there. And if you look more closely in the aerial view, you can see, let's see, that it's a, you can see that the outline of the property is about two acres, like I said. You can see, in addition to the things I pointed out, there are also three vacant parcels on the west side of the property to that face Arbor Drive, and then the larger one with the, the lake there, with the pond there. Let's see, so looking at it from the zoning map, again, the parcel is outlined there at the corner. It's currently zoned R3. Formerly, the site included a house, shed, and a swimming pool. The adjacent property to the north is, is single-family homes, owned similarly, R3. Across Old Providence Road to the northeast is the museum that's zoned R4. You can see that in the orange. To the east is Waxall Elementary, zoned R1. To the south, across Arbor Drive, are residential lots in green. Those are zoned R1. To the west, the vacant parcel is zoned R3. So that's the portion from the zoning map. Now we go over to the future land use map. This is from the Waxall 2040 Comp Plan. Of course, state law mandates that zoning be undertaken with consideration of the comprehensive plan, and that a consistency statement be prepared and approved for every zoning amendment. So we can, so we want to take a look at the, at the future land use plan right here. Recently adopted, it designates the property as mixed use. You can see the brown color, the red star there. And then going north from that on Old Providence, you can see it continues in that mixed use, land use, designated land use before it gets to the town center zoning, or not zoning, but, but land use. And the, the purpose for the neighborhood center zoning is to encourage walkable neighborhoods by creating strategically located mixed use nodes, and those to fit harmoniously into the neighborhoods therein. So you can see in this particular instance, there is that line of mixed use designation, and it, and the, it terminates at Arbor Drive, so that would be the end, as you can see. The, just a general description of this mixed use designation, you can see the principal uses there, examples of smaller-scale offices, neighborhood-oriented retail services, civic and institutional buildings, places that would benefit a community if people can walk to them rather than having to get in their car, downtown, or go elsewhere. This gives more opportunity for those local businesses and services. There are also opportunities within the mixed use designation for residential. We'll go into more detail about that. But the, the purpose, as you can see outlined here, is to provide an alternative to that auto-oriented, commercial, large parking lot type of development, and to also express the architectural identity of the town. The, the, the vision for, part of the vision for these neighborhood centers is that they would reflect the downtown in sort of a micro way, so that when you're driving around town, you get the sense of, we're in Waxall, you know, we see this neighborhood center, we see these commercial buildings or civic buildings or whatever, and they have that Waxall flavor in the architecture. I think that's very important for reinforcing that identity. The conditions, as you can see here, strategically located, neighborhood scale nodes composed of that mix. So I will take us to the, the land development code now. The reason being is that, you know, in order to make that Waxall 2040 vision occur, one of the primary tools for that is, is zoning. And so what we see here is the, the mixed use nodes formed using the neighborhood center zoning. The land development code also spells out the, the intention for those zones and also the requirements for them. So have a look to the right there and you'll see one of our typical cut sheets within the land development code for each one of the, of the zoning districts in Waxall. And in that cut sheet up top, you see a, a general description of what's intended, a lot of what I've already said. But you'll also see the, over, you'll also see like some primary uses down to the bottom right, below the pictures. Those would just be typical field pictures, just where you would see similar types of development in other communities, that, some of the forms that it can take, and then some of the primary uses that we often see, or would like to see in some of these neighborhood centers. And then to the left of that, I know it's very small to read, but basically what's shown here are all the different dimensional standards for neighborhood center. So you have your, your front, rear, side setbacks, you have the heights of buildings, all the things that, that are typical for each zoning district. At the bottom though, is probably perhaps the thing that you'd want to take the most notice of, and we will, I've spared your eyes, in the next slide, where I'm going to expand all that, and we'll look at that in detail. Before we go to that next slide though, I also want to point out the buffer requirements. When you have an NC zone adjacent to, in this case, residential zones, particularly the R3, you can see there in the brown on the left side, the neighborhood center, you go across and you see R3 on the top, and you can see that there's an A there in the matrix. That just means that the, of the different kinds of buffers that are already, that are, that are described in the, in the land development code, this requires the minimal buffer, an A, which is a 10-foot wide strip with three trees and 20 shrubs for every linear feet. That's the minimum requirement. Or they can put in an opaque fence there. So that would provide some, some buffer between the uses. So now, going into those notes that I, that I mentioned on the previous slide, I want to point out particularly the things in yellow, but you can see the non-residential buildings up top, they have a size limit. Each of them, each of them can have a footprint of no longer, no bigger than 10,000 square feet. If you imagine, I'm most familiar with the Town Hall building, that's 8,000 square feet, so it's not much bigger than that. And so there are size limits, and that's important when you consider how the neighborhood center should be different noticeably from, say, a commercial corridor that's more auto-oriented, the large box stores, it's nothing like that, can't get near that size. But what I want to draw your attention to mostly here are the, the requirements if, if in this mixed use zone, there's a desire to develop any residential units. So you can see with multi-family residential, these units shall not be developed from the ground up, they can only be located on the second and above floors. No ground floor, multi-family residential, so that's mostly speaking of apartments or a condo-type situation and all. Other residential units though, and you can see a list of them there, they, they, if they're going in, they have to be part of a mixed use development where the residential, non-residential uses are proportionate to the lot size, and they have to be approved by the zoning administrator on a case-by-case basis. Now, if, if someone comes along who owns this property and it's zoned NC, if they want to do strictly residential projects, that, for one thing, is discouraged because that doesn't meet the, the intention of the neighborhood center. But if it's proposed, it requires the conditional zoning, so that means it comes right back to you, and you can impose conditions on that particular development, or deny it, or whatever, and you're all familiar with how that works. So that, that gets kicked in, it's not, that is not a by right thing at all in neighborhood center. For single-family attached, the units do not have to have a minimum lot width, but the units themselves shall be no less than 60 feet in width with their adjacent side yards. If there are other types of developments, like a duplex, quadruplex, and such, that means a greater width for those is, is required. The maximum residential density for this type of development is eight units per acre, so the most that it could be in this particular two-acre lot is 16 units, and that's maxing out. So this project has been brought to the planning board and, but before I get to that, I'll just mention that the rezoning they found, and also, we, staff has, has found as well, that the rezoning request is consistent with the Waxall 2040 land plan. So when we looked at that future land use plan, you can see it was in a mixed use area, designated mixed use area. So it is, it is reasonable, or rather, it's consistent to have NC within those areas. Again, it's zoning that makes the, the visionary map of, of the future land use actually come to be. And it's also reasonable in the public interest as a parcel is a large corner lot along a busy north-south connector road. So when you think about the types of uses that NC zoning promotes, those are uses that do very well on a, on a corner lot. Oftentimes, residential is not ideal on a corner lot, but commercial, non-residential almost always is. And the, the value of having more commercial in Waxall, among other things, is to help provide some diversity to the tax base. That is the, or, that was the consistency and reasonable statement. The planning board, which I was getting to earlier, has reviewed the rezoning petition, and they did that on May 21st, voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation. And our request is just, either if you have questions, please ask, otherwise, motion to close.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
When I looked at the slides, it showed the 2040 plan, and it had the area circle that it was up before. Is there any way we can go back to that? That area? So as I'm looking at that, and I looked at the 2040 plan, the circle that it's within, that teal circle?
The large dashed circle, yes.
Yeah. That's depicted as downtown in the 2040 plan, not NC, so I was just curious. I know that the brown is mixed use, but that the, the circle that it's within is downtown. And so that changes from what I was reading, what the buildings would look like. They have to be more historical in what they look like. And then also, as I'm looking at it, I know that that's the 2040 plan, but in 2024, everything around it is medium density. So I guess my question would be, would it be consistent at this point? And I know it's a corner lot, but that corner lot, Arbor?
Yes.
I've, I've driven down Arbor, it's a very tiny street. And so if the intention is for walkability and that sort of thing, the concern is the sidewalks aren't really great there, and what is our PED plan? Is it on the capital improvement plan? And when would that happen? Because I don't see people being able to walk to this NC at this time. With the, there's a scheduled roundabout coming, right?
Just north of there.
Just north of there. How does that impact the traffic? I know it's supposed to make it better, but Waxall Elementary is across the street, and a good nine months out of that year, the traffic on that road is horrendous to get to anywhere. So I don't know that it's, at this time, ready for that type of commercial. We need it, but I don't know if anybody can get there. So, I know I threw a lot at you.
Sure, no, no, there are a number of things addressed there. First of all, the designation of town center by that aqua-colored line, you're referring to, and you can see also an orange one that curves in another direction that way.
That's a little further out.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I'm getting is that, without having the whole map in front of us, the way that the future land use map is arranged is that there are certain centers that are identified through these dashed lines, and they're dashed because they're approximate. And they indicate sort of a center rather than an exact edge. Being that this is within the town center, I think that's a very good observation that, yes, these, any development in this area, particularly since it's just down the street from the mill and such, it really has an important historical role to play. Now, there's nothing there now, it's not like, you know, where we, we would be preserving historic buildings. But the architecture that goes in, it, it would be appropriate that it reflects downtown Waxall. And that's true of any neighborhood center as well. Whether this is within that town center circle or within a neighborhood center circle, the intent is that the identity of the town is reinforced through that, through those architectural elements, however possible. It's not to recreate downtown, but to reflect downtown in some way. So that style, that issue about style, I think is very, is very important, and here is an opportunity to make that happen. As far as pedestrian improvements, those generally come with development. And I, I wish that I had the, the pedestrian plan in front of me, but I, I'm, I, I recall that the crossing from Arbor, Arbor Street to the, to the, to the elementary school, that has a very minimal facility now, but I believe that that facility is going to be improved, or is slated to be improved within that plan. And, and sidewalks as well along Old Providence Road. Those things happen as they happen. Part of what, part of what brings them to be is when new development goes in, and that would also be true along that stretch of Arbor Drive. And I believe that as those, as those adjacent to parcels are developed, that they also can, can be fit with proper pedestrian sidewalk, or whatever it would be. So if the, if the, if it were to be just developed as is, there would not be, I don't think, as much opportunity for those, for those facilities to, to come about as early as they would if a development like commercial would come in. Traffic is always an issue in, in the town, and I think that's the case because of so much through traffic that goes along Old Providence. There is a lot of north-south traffic, majority of the traffic along Old Providence Road is north-south commuter traffic that originates outside and ends up outside of Waxall, it's just coming through Waxall. So it's unfortunate that right now, our road system is such that everyone is channeled through that and has to, you know, go to downtown and then take a ride to go up 16. Hopefully, that won't always be the case. The way it's not going to be the case is through further development. And at a micro level here, further development can help bring, bring about those pedestrian improvements. Now, James and Matt could speak more to that specific, about that particular intersection, but in general, that would be true. I'm not sure if I've answered everything.
No, you've, you have, it's just that, you know, the fact remains that this is a general rezoning, it's not a conditional rezoning, so we're not getting sidewalks as a condition. So it would be up to the town to be able to do that, and at what point, I guess, will it be walkable? Plus, with the school across the street, you know, we have to worry about kids trying to cross, and, and I think those are questions, you know, we kind of have to know the answer to.
There are requirements tied to any new development, if, especially if it's depicted specifically on the pedestrian plan for those, to build those, or to, yeah, to build those facilities. So I think that it, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of a conditional zoning for that to happen. Otherwise, we would have a lot of gaps in our system because then we'd have to do everything by conditional zoning to get anything built. So, I mean, I would like to, to provide you more detailed information about how those facilities, what's planned, and how this can, can come about, and I can certainly get back to you about that. But in general, true.
Anything else? Anyone else?
So I'm assuming you had a neighborhood meeting, zoning meeting? Were there any people there? Did anybody comment, complain? Was there?
Was there any? No, that's not required for a general reason.
For not this one, there's not? So have we heard from any planning board meeting, anything from any of the neighboring property owners that were not in favor of this?
Well, there was a, there's, there's an announcement that goes out to adjacent property owners for this public hearing. But as you can see, there's no one here and no one has contacted the town about it with any kinds of complaints.
If, if you would like to make a public comment, are you, let's, let's get our questions answered from the board and then nobody signed up for public comments, but in this case I'll go ahead and allow a public comment once Blair's done. I, I, I understand you have a public comment. I want your public comment to be heard on the microphone for the record. So we want to hear your public comment. I'm just, I want to have it done at the right time, in the right way. Exactly. And that's what I'm asking. So give me a second. Yes, when, when we're ready. So I just want to make sure we get everybody's questions answered from the board and then Blair's given us all the information that we need. And then I'll invite public comment. Anything else? Did you get everything, Tracey? Alrighty.
Okay. It might be good to, to hear from the applicant first and to, to resolve any of those questions if I can recommend that.
Certainly.
Yes, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matt Kalanowski. Our owner of this property on Old Providence. I'll try to answer any questions the best I can right now. It is a general rezoning, so naturally you're going to say, well, what's going to be built there? What's going to be developed? And what I can tell you is my intent is like commercial retail. Trying, I'm trying to help the town grow. I, I'm big in history, so I like, um, architecture. I want to, I want it to expand to downtown. You know, it meets the future land use, which is an expansion of downtown and that's the Keystone property in a part of that expansion. So I understand your concerns with pedestrians and infrastructure and sidewalks and so on and so forth. Um, you know, that's something that needs to be addressed across the board. But the fact that it's a neighborhood center, there is sidewalks, it is connecting and it's supposed to be walkable around the town. It's a neighborhood center. So I can try to answer questions. I just think. Blair pretty much hit everything. Um, as far as the P and A, P and A plan or pedestrian plan, I think there's something for improvements, say twenty-nine or twenty-seven. Um, with the crosswalks and when that happens, most likely what will happen with the development? My intent, like I said, is, is like commercial retail. I can try to answer any questions now.
Does anybody have any questions then?
I guess, is it just light retail you're looking to develop? No residential at all?
No, no residential. Right now, it's light retail. Simple, clean, something that fits downtown quarter. It's, it's a welcoming part of downtown coming in down Old Providence from, I think it's Waxaw on Road Road. So it's kind of like a welcoming corner to downtown. And being with the little pond and the cemetery right there. I understand Arbor's a little narrow. Um, but a lot of pedestrian footpath comes through there. It's in front of Old Providence, like to the school, went back and forth downtown, you know, in that direction. The neighborhood that connects behind is Hill Crest, so there's some walkability there. But I don't think we're going to have a hundred people walking down a little narrow path at one time. You know, one person here or there, I think, are pursuant for that, in my opinion, but. That's pretty much it. We're trying to keep it real simple, so.
Do you have a plat yet or any kind of informal plan put together?
No, no, to be quite honest with you, I'd rather get through this part of the process of the general rezoning before I take the spent, expense of, of paying for engineering and formal plans to submit to you and give to you. You, you know what I mean? So I just want to get through this part first. That's it. So no, to answer your question, not right now.
Okay. No other questions? Alrighty.
I just wanted to mention also that, um, what Matthew's saying about, hey, I just want to make sure the rezoning gets done first before any further investment is put in. In another way, that's very appropriate because what you're deciding here tonight is not what needs to go in that property or what fits or what doesn't. What you're determining is what type of use. Because Matt, you know, he's, he's gonna, he wants to develop it, but we don't have a guarantee that he will ever be able to do that development. We don't have a guarantee that he won't, uh, that a situation won't come up where he needs to sell the property or whatever. This is a zoning that goes with the property. It doesn't go with Matt. So, you know, think about the types of uses that are appropriate for here, not so much his particular plan. Um, I realize that his particular plan might be the thing most likely in the near future, but the decision is really about what's appropriate for the town as far as the range of uses that could go year after year as development or redevelopment or redevelopment after that occurs.
Okay. So it sounds like we had some public comments. So if you have a public comment, please step forward. You have three minutes. Keep your comments directed towards the board, not an individual.
Please at the microphone so that you can be recorded.
Yes. And then just state your name and where you reside.
I'm Bruce Widdavine. I live on eleven hundred Old Providence Road, which is adjacent to Matt's, um, property there. Um, I have to make a comment that Matt has been very upfront with us in what he wants to do with the property and it sounds good. I just want the board to know that there is a cemetery at the end of, of Arbor Drive. I think there's a lot of traffic that comes down that road. I mean, who ever heard of a road going through a cemetery? I'd never heard of that. And to put that residential, or whatever you want to do with that property, I think you have to consider that cemetery in the respect that it should, should gather. So anyway, yes, this.
Thank you. I will allow anyone else, any other comments? And again, state your name and where you reside.
Betty Widdavine. I live in the same place as my husband Bruce. We're right there in the corner and we have watched it all, watched all the beautiful trees go. My thing is Waxaw was always a very quaint town. And I think with all the growth, we're losing what makes it quaint. And growth, growth, growth everywhere. I think it's just a little too much for, um, it's, it's just got to stop somehow. And so, I mean, like, yes, this is an extension of downtown, but you can walk from that place downtown in like five or 10 minutes, you know? So I just hate to see the whole street become commercial. And I thought it was mixed use, but now it sounds like it's going to be commercial. So I'm just saying, I think we're losing what made Waxaw special in the first place.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay. So we will move on to the next item. And that would be Ms. Lisa Thompson? Or did you have anything else, Blair? Do you want to fill in for Lisa? I'm sure she wouldn't mind. Anyway, uh, something about a text amendment.
All right. Good evening, board members, mayor. My name is Lisa Thompson. I'm the planning director for the town of Waxaw. I'm here tonight to, um, introduce petition TA fifteen twenty-two. It's a request by the town planning department to amend section eight point nine open space. This is our parkland fee and lieu, um, section in our ordinance that was adopted in twenty twenty-two. This text is to include single-family attached and multifamily units to that, uh, fee and lieu requirement. One sixty D eight oh four is the enabling statute. The statute allows for the town to require a developer to provide recreation areas to serve the residents or for the developer to contribute funds for the town to acquire those recreational areas. The formula shall be based on a tax value and the town can mix funds and land dedication. The existing text again is, was adopted in twenty twenty-two. It included a parkland fee and lieu requirement for all major subdivisions. It was our intent to have the parkland fee and lieu for all residential developments, um, but it was pointed out in our ordinance that it says major subdivision. So that didn't include multifamily developments. Therefore, we are adding the provisions to add these types of developments. In addition, the parkland, um, donation fee and lieu has to be roughly proportional to the, uh, parkland needs related to that development. This principle was expressed in the U.S. Supreme Court case, uh, Dolan versus the city of Tegard. Um, so we have made those changes. The demand is generally understood to be related to the average household size, which varies by housing type. Multifamily has about point six times that of a single family. So that's where we came up with, um, these new ratios. So the single family detached of one thirty-fifth of an acre, that's, um, what we have now. We're including single family attached at one fifty-second of an acre and then the multifamily is one fifty-ninth of an acre or that fee and lieu for that number of acres. This is based on the fair market value. That's at the final plat stage. Or for a, um, multifamily would be at the, um, submittal of their first, uh, building permit. With every text amendment, we have the reasonable consistency statement that will need to be adopted upon your decision. The planning board, uh, did hear this at their May meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval. And we are looking for a motion to open and close the public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll jump in with a question. Can you, back to the fractions?
Yep.
Can you explain the rationale why one's a one thirty-fifth and the other one's a one fifty-two?
Yeah, so that's based on, um, the the average household size for a single family, um, versus average household size of a single family.
It's based on the size of the residence and not necessarily the number of bedrooms?
Number, the population within that household.
That's what this number's based on? Average?
Yes.
So it, does it take into account the number of bedrooms?
It would not. So it's per unit.
And is there any reason why the numbers wouldn't be equivalent?
So less, um, family members would live in a multifamily than a single family. So that has to be proportionate to the request for.
But a lot of multifamilies are still two and three bedrooms or you could have four or five occupants. I'm just wondering if we can make those numbers the same because it's proportional? And when you have a residence that doesn't have a backyard, I would feel that their need would be a little higher than a, a residence that had a backyard.
We can.
I think the need for open space for parks and empty space is higher for an apartment than it is for actual residents.
We can relook at those ratios, but it's based on population per that dwelling type?
And is this a, an industry standard or a governmental standard that's been adopted by most everybody or?
Yeah, so I, this is copied from the, um, city or town of Apex. Um, they did a very thorough report, um, to get to, um, that population per park, um, acreage.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of these apartment complexes that tend to be family heavy. And because you can always end up with that type of situation. You talk about proportional to the need. If you have four or five-person families in apartments, they, they need a lot of parking.
It's based on the average, but we can take a look.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we can bring those two a little closer together.
Well, Lisa, I'd probably encourage you also then, if you're going to go back and look at that, um, the, uh, take a really close look at the roughly proportional, uh, section of the U.S. Supreme Court decision because we want to stay away from anything that's possibly discriminatory.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, do.
Any other questions from the board? Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. So at this time, I'd like to get a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very well. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Next order of business is the decision for the proposed fiscal year budget. Mr. Jeff Wells.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, everybody. And, uh, we have finally reached the, the end of our annual six-month journey here for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Uh, you've had, uh, the public hearing, which was, uh, two weeks ago. Then you had your budget workshop, which was the end of April. And I'm sure that you've read the budget, uh, up and down and all around. So, uh, don't want to go through all these slides again. I, I will focus though on the first and then really the last slide just to review the big picture with, uh, everyone. The proposed operating budget is twenty-one million, six hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. So that includes, uh, two different funds. Your, uh, your primary, uh, expenditure fund is the general fund. That's the fund where all of our department operations are housed. That's proposed for twenty-one million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. And also part of your operating budget is a special revenue fund. There are four different funds, uh, within that. Three of them have to do with the, uh, police department, the police explorers fund, the police state drug and the police federal, uh, drug. And those are special funds because they are specific to those functions and those, uh, revenues that we get in must be spent in those areas. The other special revenue fund that we have is the cemetery. And that's the, um, the fund that operates the cemetery on an annual basis. Capital improvement budgets, four million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Of course, that includes the, uh, the, uh, next year of our capital improvement plan. And as you see there, we are continuing our five-year capital improvement plan. It's been very successful. Hundred projects within that, uh, plan with twenty-eight completed so far. Of course, we'll continue to add to that list as the year goes on. Your, uh, tax rate would be, uh, maintained at thirty-eight and a half cents. That's been, uh, this will be the sixth year in a row that, uh, we are at that tax rate. And just, uh, for people that are interested in knowing, a penny on the tax rate is approximately three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. And you calculate that from using the real, uh, property tax, prior year delinquent tax and motor vehicle taxes. And that makes up roughly, uh, sixty or so percent of the revenues that we receive. We receive other revenues such as a sales tax, franchise tax and other things. Uh, revenues from building inspections such that make up the rest of those, those revenues. So with that, we've already been through all this information several times. So unless you have any additional questions or, uh, comments, the, uh, the three motions that, uh, we are requesting recommended here. First is, uh, adoption of operating budget with ordinance listed. Second is motion, uh, to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-nine capital improvement plan. And then the third is motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement budget and ordinance with a specific ordinance number. So as always, and I've, I've said this multiple times, it's, uh, it's a pleasure to, to work on this document. It's a pleasure to have such a, a great team of folks and, and this really does, it's an extensive prod- process. It's the most extensive process that we do every single year. And just can't tell you how proud I am of everybody's involvement in getting to this point. And as I've said, it actually can be kind of fun. So, uh, we'll look forward to getting started again, uh, next December after we get through, uh, through this one. So happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may, uh, may still have, have any.
Any last questions from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you for the addition of the at-a-glance section. Um, and especially the comms department. I know they worked hard on that and it's attractive and it really helps the public to get a big picture, look at what's going on. And this board to get a big picture of what's going on. And, uh, actually in the next budget cycle, I think that's something we could, you know, delve into a little more just to make sure that the overall percentage growth of our budget, um, is not disproportionate to things like inflation and population growth and things like that, just to make sure that we're respecting the taxpayer. I did a comparison with Charlotte's operating budget, and on average, their budget increased since 2020 about five and a half percent. And on average, ours increased about eleven and a half percent. So, you know, some of that's probably because of more population growth here in Waxaw. But maybe we could drill into it a little more when we have the budget workshop next year. And I'd like to sort of empower this board to set a ceiling for overall growth of the budget. You know, we want to make sure that it's, you know, every taxpayer dollar is being respected. And that's what the big picture look at this will do.
Thank you. Anything else?
I did want to comment about the comms director position. I know that the board had sort of talked about having a manager position instead. And Commissioner Hall, I agreed with your comments about ideally having, because of the specialized skill sets, having these types of positions to be contracted. So, I was wondering if you had changed your mind on that at all?
The contractor we have is not going to continue. If the town wants to continue with a contracted position, then we can, I'll, I'll trust Jeff to determine if, if he can find another contractor. And, and for the record, the city, when you're comparing the taxes between Town of Waxaw and the City of Charlotte, the City of Charlotte's district, and each district also has its own taxes, waste, waste fees on top of everything else. So, when you say the aggregate is five percent, it's actually not entirely accurate. It went up quite a bit more in the City of Charlotte. When you, when you take into consideration all the various different districts, because there's a number of districts in the City of Charlotte.
Well, there's always going to be differences between any locality, but I think by making it a percentage, it sort of makes it vaguely comparable.
So we're comparing the Town of Waxaw to the City of Charlotte, then?
Operational budgets, yeah.
Operational budgets?
Right.
Okay, so...
Okay. Just a quick comment about the, the comms director position. And, and some of you that have, that have been here a little while longer, we've, we've talked about comms for several years and, and getting to the point where we need that to be more of an internal position. Of course, we're, we're trying to be budget-friendly with that and, and make that be at the last quarter of this year. I, I think, quite frankly, that, that semantics between director and manager is just, just that, it's, it's really just a title. We have some directors that have a staff, public services will have a staff of twelve people. We have other directors like HR and business development that are a staff of two. So it, that it, it's a title. It's not really indicative of anything other, other than that in our, in internal structure and, and operations. And of course, we built our town hall to have an internal comms team. And I think we can move forward with a two-person comms team and be just fine for the foreseeable future in that way. Can always reassess that, just like any budget, every single year. That's the beauty of a budget, is you have that opportunity that you don't have in other places to, to revisit things on an annual basis.
Yeah, well, I think everyone on this board would agree that no, no one of us can really match your knowledge and experience of the day-to-day details. That's why I think the big picture is so important for us, because I'm happy to, you know, trust you on those details. And it's good, of course, for us as a board also to look at the details that, that we're interested in. But just the overall big picture, I think, is something that we could use some more focus on. And I think you're probably looking for that kind of guidance from us, too.
Oh, absolutely. Every single year, always open to whatever information you'd like to, to provide and feedback, of course, like you did at the budget workshop. And we're able to provide that with comms help, the budget at-a-glance is one example. But anything you want to see and work through, we're, we're open to that. Provide any, any information or any type of drill down that you're interested in, absolutely.
Anything else? Last call. Alrighty. Can I get a motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five operating budget and ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four dash zero, one, zero?
Motion to adopt...
Jinx.
Motion to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget and ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four dash zero, one, zero?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-five dash twenty-nine capital improvement plan?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-four dash twenty-five capital improvement budget and ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four dash zero, zero, nine?
All in favor?
Aye.
And those motions carry. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board.
Next up, we have Ms. Lisa regarding the duet. I guess before we go into much detail, I'll ask the pressing question on everybody's mind. Has the easement issue been resolved?
It has not. The easement remains.
So, in light of that, I would like to get a motion to deny CD zero, zero, four dash twenty-two, twenty-four.
I would like to just, well, motion's on the floor. Okay. Can I make a comment prior to voting on the motion? Okay.
Yes, discussion.
All right. With the easement, I just want to say that there are variables here in this submittal without enough definitives, although it appears to be a good, possibly, possibly, a good development, that there are too many what-ifs that are going on right now as far as the easement, which is a main concern of many of us. And also with what it's going to look like, either with the easement or without the easement. In addition to that, there are concerns with regard to the Parkway. We're told that this can be a big benefit, you know, in developing the Parkway, but how is that development going to look? Does it mean that they are going to assist in building? Are they going to assist in contributing towards the Parkway? How is that going to work? So we need to really understand exactly with a plan, you know, if they can't, if they're going to resubmit, or whatever they're going to do to define what's going on. But it's not our role as a board to go through any interdevelopmental agreements they may, may not have, or what they're doing or what they're not doing with regard to this project and how it's going to look. And as it looks right now, as a whole, it is not sufficient for us to really move forward with. So, with that motion on the floor.
Just real quick, they are obligated to build the Parkway. We would want a three-lane section, but, but the easement...
But is it going to be a three-lane? Is it going to be a four-lane? Are they only doing two lanes? What are they doing? We don't know. I haven't seen, I don't know. I, I heard, I hear, but there's a difference between submitting it on paper or giving us that information or some type of proposal as to what it's going to look like. We don't have that either.
Yep, we have the, a condition that that's a construction plan item to figure out that they'd have to match the existing three-lane section.
Okay, and they have to work through whatever variables they have in the easement and everything else with that particular problem? I'm ready for the motion. Motion on the floor?
To add to that, the condition of, of non-establish, not establishing the retail first is a hard one for me.
Although we cannot make a demand that they do the retail first.
Our zoning, I think, says that it requires that.
It says it requires it?
Established.
But it has to be established?
Correct.
That they're going to do that? Does it have to be established that they're going to do that? Or that they're going to build that?
So it says exclusive housing develops, developments will not be considered until non-residential uses are well-established in the employment center. That could be an adopted plan, or it could be...
So they're not meeting that, that, the employment center agreement as well? So, with that.
Can I get a motion then to deny conditional zoning zero, zero, CD zero, zero, four, twenty-two, twenty-four?
Motion to deny CD zero, zero, four dash twenty-two, twenty-four as presented. For the reasons, for the reasons that were specified.
And then we have a land use plan consistency statement. It is consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan. If you're going to vote to deny, you would list why it's unreasonable.
It is not reasonable and consistent with the two, is it on the screen so I can read it exactly as stated? So there's no confusion?
So I have options, so it's in the bottom paragraph?
The plan is inconsistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan. It is not reasonable in that it provides a variety of, does not, does not provide a variety of housing and retail along the Waxaw Parkway and constructs, does not construct one half of the Parkway to Waxaw Indian Trail Road as identified on the town's master transportation plan.
All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the denial? That was easy. Thank you very much, Lisa. New business, we have Mr. Kelly once again.
Hello again. This time I'm talking about speed cushions in particular. The location is along Oakmere Road in the Millbridge subdivision. So just to provide you a quick overview, Waxaw's traffic calming policy determines the eligibility for the installation of these traffic calming devices. And these speed cushions are typically a three to four-inch vertical deflection used to reduce vehicular speed. And the speed cushion detail additionally has various cutouts to allow emergency vehicles to pass over without reducing speed. So some of the key changes that we are implementing is the rubber form speed cushion design as opposed to the standard asphalt design. One of the key primary differences is cost difference. The rubber form typically costs half the cost of the traditional asphalt. In addition, the rubber form also is more durable and can be removed and reused in the case of resurfacing. So if the road ever has to be resurfaced, if it was a standard asphalt speed cushion, you would have to remove the entire speed cushion, mill that out, and then replace it. You have an added cost there as opposed to just removing these and replacing them right on, right on the spot. So, we went through phase one of the traffic calming policy, which is where the property owner submitted a written request to the town to perform a traffic evaluation study. This study was completed on Oakmere Road at approximately mid-block between Hamilton Mill Drive and Coldwater Mill Drive. The analyzed locations met the criterion in accordance with the town's traffic calming policy. As part of phase two of the, of the process, the petition documents were sent to the property owner to obtain signatures of support. And the traffic calming petition met the minimum seventy percent of properties within the area signing in favor of the petition for the installation of the speed cushion. So all of these details are further outlined within your agenda packet this evening. Town staff reviewed these signatures for accuracy and did confirm that the minimum seventy percent support was achieved. And we also received a letter of support from the Millbridge HOA. So next steps from here, town staff recommends the installation of the speed cushion along Oakmere Road as identified. And that identification being one speed cushion located approximately at mid-block on Oakmere Road between Hamilton Mill Drive and Coldwater Mill Drive. As we've seen throughout any construction expense, there are inflation factors that we've seen, especially over the last three to five years. Estimated financial impact of the installation is fifty-five hundred, and there's a breakdown there. Those funds are eligible within the PAL bill program. So those are the funds we would utilize for this particular installation. And again, this is cheaper than the standard traditional asphalt speed cushion. And we've also heard from the Millbridge HOA, we have some other rubber form speed cushions there, and they are finding that the rubber form speed cushions are more effective in slowing drivers down as well. So, and, so upon Waxaw BOC authorization of expenditures, a contract for the speed cushion installation will be issued. And note that prior to the start of construction, the HOA as well as adjacent residences will be notified of the construction. So with that, I am looking for a motion to approve the installation of the speed cushions.
Can I get a motion to approve the installation of speed cushions along Oakmere Road as presented?
Motion to approve the installation of speed cushions along Oakmere Road as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Millbridge.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Kelly, don't go anywhere.
So next up, we have the first reading of a proposed change, ordinance amending the posted speed limit of West North Main, in particular between Rehoboth Road and all the way to NC sixteen in the downtown area. So just to provide a brief overview, this is a proposed amendment to Section sixty-six, Test Fifty-seven of the Code of Ordinances, to provide some history and context, as this road can be a little bit confusing. And what I mean by that is previously this road was maintained by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. So a lot of people when traveling along this roadway, they're not really well aware of the statutory speed limit of thirty-five for it being a state road within municipal limits. The town did take over maintenance of this roadway a few months ago, from the limits of Rehoboth Road, right there at the railroad crossing, to North Broome Street or NC sixteen. And we are recommending a amended posted speed limit for this road section to twenty-five miles per hour. So the requested action this evening is just to provide your overall feedback, and then we'll come back at the June twenty-fifth meeting for the second reading and adoption.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, this is probably a section of road that everyone's familiar with. I've driven it many times. Just to be clear, it seems like half of it is thirty-five right now, and then the other half is like twenty, right? So the path that's twenty would be risen to...
That's correct. So the path that's twenty would be twenty-five and make the whole stretch there a uniform twenty-five. So that way it's very clear. Add signage, add advance warning signage, and we already have message boards up indicating that it is to reduce speed as people are traveling to the downtown area. So yes, we would make that whole stretch uniform.
Yeah, make sales, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that concludes the bulk of our business, so we'll jump to leadership reports. Mr. Wells, I believe you've got a leadership report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few things to share this evening, an update on our town campus project. That's our town hall and public services, Parks and Recreation Operations Center at the intersection of Waxaw Marvin Road and Kensington Drive. So just a few things that are going on out there now. We're on track for it to be open in August, that's what they tell me. So, looking forward to, to that. So cross your fingers that we have a lot of dry weather, and hopefully we'll be able to stick to that schedule. You've probably noticed that the temporary fencing is down. They took that down to be able to finish off the grading around the perimeter of the property there, so they are in process of doing that. And then the last area that they will grade is where the construction trailer is now, so it will probably be removed within the next couple of weeks. And then our next, uh, regular meeting that we have there on-site for the construction admin will be in the building. You've driven by there in the evening now, you'll see that the lights are on. So that's another nice little milestone in there. Concrete pours are ongoing. We have the stairs now that go up to the front of the town hall or in, as well as most of the, the sidewalks. Asphalt scheduled for the parking area should be in late June. And we've got final electrical installs in progress. Flooring is supposed to start in the next couple of weeks, and that's something that our IT folks are very anxious to have happen because they can't get in there and start doing all of the data until the flooring is in. So we're going to start in the data center there and then work from around, from around there. Made the order for the two freestanding signs. They would... They would match the designing theme that we have throughout town now, through the wayfinding signs, as well as the signs that we had at Downtown Park and the sign that we have at the, at the rec barn. And furniture right now is scheduled to arrive in late July. So a lot going on there now in the last couple of months, and hopefully we get to completion. And so we'll, I, I, I think we'll, we'll be very pleased when you walk in there next time and see the chambers and the dais, and it'll be a significant difference from where we're at now. And it'll be great for the town. Short session budget update at the state level. The Senate and House have still not agreed on a spend number for the budget. That's pretty typical for these budget, budget processes. Our lobbyists indicated that they probably won't have a budget by the end of June, but as always, things are very fluid in Raleigh. It can be very negative, 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 and then all of a sudden, the next day, they come to an agreement, and then they rush to adopt a budget. So that's really how it works in Raleigh. Deborah was able to confirm today that Senator Johnson did submit a project for Waxaw, but she was not able to confirm which one because they cross paths quickly from going from one place to another. She was not able to recall that just off the top of his head, but she will try to follow up with him and see which project was submitted, and we'll keep track of that, cross our fingers, and hope for the best. And the last thing I'll share is just the overwhelming positive feedback that I hear on almost a daily basis about the Downtown Park. It's just spectacular. And I'm sure it's nothing that you haven't already heard, but I was out this weekend with just a bunch of dads that I hang out with, doing some yard games. And I thought it was pretty special when you have just a bunch of dads tell you how awesome a park is. So I just thought I would share that with the Board and share that with our Parks and Rec Director, that you got a lot of appreciation out there.
That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, next up, Ashley.
Guys, so I want to talk about everyone's favorite downtown topic, parking. So our Downtown Waxaw Economic Vitality Committee did a parking study back in March. This is something we do every six months, just to keep a track of how parking is downtown. The, what we've noticed every time we've counted is that the south side gets really busy at lunch, and then our north side gets really busy at dinner. And that has been consistent every time we've, you have counted our parking spaces. We have also noticed that even at our busiest time ever since we started counting our spaces, that thirty to forty percent of our spaces are available even at our busiest time, which tells us that there's a big problem of parking awareness. So our committee, our committee is really focused on improving our parking awareness over the next year, as well as adding new. So we did end up adding new spaces at the Community Corner recently. Like I said, the north side gets the busiest in the evenings, and so that was a great location to add some new spots. So we've added fourteen spaces there. So I want to give a big thank you to Todd and Deana's team for helping make that possible. We are also working with our volunteers to update our ADA parking counts. So we'll count the number of ADA spaces we have in downtown and then make recommendations for locations and number of new ones. We've also included parking as a big piece of our downtown master plan project. We are also working with engineering right now on the CRTPO MTP survey. We'll be hosting some downtown public engagement sessions over the next week. So on Tuesday, June eighteenth at nine AM, we're going to have our downtown businesses come to the McDonald House for a quick session. And then on Thursday, June twentieth at five, we'll be at the Waxaw Tap House for a session. So these are open to the public, but we're really targeting them to our downtown businesses, building owners, and then our kind of downtown volunteers and stakeholders. With new town hall coming soon, we are actually moving our Business Development Department downtown. So Alara and I will be moving into the McDonald House. We're going to start that move in July. So if you want to come see us, we'll have a great little welcome center, some new gift cards that will be available there, too. And then lastly, I wanted to mention a couple of new businesses. So, and we held a ribbon cutting for Lady Pride Lacrosse about a week and a half ago. And there are new girls lacrosse program that's providing services here in Waxaw. So if you guys have any kids all the way up to high school can participate in this program. And then also, if you haven't seen online, Jekyll and Hyde is opening soon, really soon, within the next month. They are hiring this week, so if you know anyone that's looking for a job in the service industry, they are hiring every day from ten to five, Monday through Friday this week. So, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ashley. Next up, we have Ms. Lisa Thompson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. A few development updates. The Villages of Waxaw, that's a town home development, thirty-two units on Waxaw Marvin Road did break ground about two weeks ago. We do have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow with the parcel behind Arby's and the Prescott Shopping Center. That's a mixed commercial retail office. It's two, two buildings that will break down, break ground shortly. And then the construction plans for the Lowe's Shopping Center, Lowe's Food have been approved. So they plan to break ground in the next month. As far as text amendments, we have our Conservation Development District draft. They went to Planning Board for a preview last month. We hope to get that for, through them for a recommendation to you all, so we'll bring that forward shortly. And then an update on number of homes. We have, as of March, six thousand nine hundred and fifty-four through today's date. In two thousand twenty-four, we have five new homes this year. We may not be able to beat last year's fourteen, but we are well below average of two hundred and sixty-eight homes per year over the last ten years. As far as new developments, we have two new residential developments. It's the atrium mixed use, that property next to the hospital. It's a hundred and ninety multifamily that's age restricted. And forty thousand square feet of medical office. And then the Artisan is the residential portion of Prescott. It's going behind the commercial there. They are proposing a town home development, about a hundred and seventy-five units. So in yellow are approximate number of units under review. It's one thousand one hundred and eighty-three. That number has gone down tonight after the decision for the duet. That was three hundred and twelve units. That will take off that number, and then Yarborough Farms. In green, we have number of units approved. Emerson Park, Cottage Park, the Preserve, Rogers Pond, Seven Hills, Adelina in Amavi. And then in red, we have four hundred and fifty-one units under construction. Villages of Waxaw have been added to that number. This last slide, Mayor Murray asked for, it shows developments either under construction or approved. Units approved is the first column, units per acre, number of acres, and then the buy right density. It's just the number of acres times, if it's R four, it'd be up to five units per acre. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And next up, Parks and Rec, Ms. Deana.
Good evening. So at your spot, you were given this beautiful new program guide that starts in July, and it has all the fun things going on from July to December. Also has an updated of the event calendar for this coming up budget year. This coming up week, we have Juneteenth on Friday night at the Downtown Park. This is an educational celebration for Juneteenth. Please come and join us at six PM to nine. And you also have information in your, your packet as well. Then on next Friday, June the twenty-first, we have our first Music in the Park event. So we are changing up. We had jamming last week, and then we'll have music in the park. So two music nights a month, one will be uptown, and then one will be in the park. And then, of course, our July Fourth Parade. We are still looking for entries, so we'd love, if you want to decorate a float, we would love to have you. And we love to have floats that make lots of noise. So love to have you on that. And looking for volunteers. So if you are, are a group that would love to volunteer with us, on average, we need around a hundred volunteers to make the parade work. So we would love for you to come volunteer. Tomorrow, we have Hero at Town Creek. We're doing Father's Day craft because Father's Day is coming up this weekend. And then Little Cooks with Fun Books, Edible Art, and Zumba is coming up. To set the tone for Hero coming up at the June nineteenth is the Water Fun Day that is very popular with citizens. It's at Nesbit with some collaboration with the bar department. So that is like one of our most popular Hero Days, so please come and join us for that. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Nope.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Deana. Mr. Todd.
Doing good. How much is left? Yeah, good. We finally did a walkthrough on Main Street stations. It's been about a year and a half we've been waiting for them to call us. They got some repairs to do and the sidewalks incurred, but the streets were, we had marked up one spot on the street. That was, we was, we was proud of that. We're doing some sidewalk repairs in Keraton and Mill Bridge. We digging some footers for Charters of Freedom. Melanie's going to talk about that more next meeting. Helping with the pipe inspections in the park. We had a sinkhole in the Oaks. The Oaks was built in the county and brought into the city, and the pipes were never inspected. So this year, we've had four sinkholes, and every one of them's been not cambered. And then we had one in the Oaks that was cambered, but when they patched the pipe, they missed the mark, so they had to come out and fix everything, not their diamond, not us. So it's really working out, saving us a lot of money getting these pipes cambered. But now our homes called today, they're ready to turn over. Seven C, seven D, seven E, and seven F in Mill Bridge. Seven C might be waiting a little while because they got some issues behind the house. And we working with James right now to do paving and crack sealing for this year and doing repairs in Waxaw Crossing. They're getting ready to turn that over to us. And well, Lisa touched on about the houses. Last year at this time, we had six thousand nine hundred and forty-eight houses. And this year, this time, we got six thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. There's only ten houses basically were trash customers this year. So I don't know where all this traffic's coming from. So, I was like.
So, any questions? Thanks again, Todd, for your team and all their hard work. Anything from the Board? Nope.
No? I have a comment.
Nope, comment?
If there are none, no others. To all the fathers, grandfathers, great-grandfathers, men who substitute as fathers, step up as fathers, we wish you all very happy Father's Day. Happy and blessed day.
I concur.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.